Hello, I'm Ken Kyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the July 21st, 2022 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being livestreamed on the CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We're also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Due to retirement recognition at the beginning of this meeting, citizen participation may begin later than normal. We will still have the second citizen participation as we get to it on our agenda if needed. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would like a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Second?
Any discussion, any modifications? All those in favor? I'd like a motion for the approval of the minutes from the June 8th meeting. Second?
I'll second.
Everybody good? All those in favor? Mrs. McCabe, retirement recognition.
Okay, we'd like to take, um, am I hooked up? Is the red light still on?
This switch.
There it goes. Try now. No, got it.
Testing? Now we're on.
There we are. Thank you.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize our retirees at this time.
So, good afternoon. My name is Ernesto Diaz. I'm the Director of Human Resources for Carroll County Public Schools. And thank you Commissioner Weaver and Board Members and Superintendent McCabe. It's an honor to recognize all of our retirees for their hard work and dedication throughout their careers with Carroll County Public Schools. This year, we are marking the retirement of 138 employees who have given a combined total of 3,511 years of service to our schools. To those who are here with us this afternoon and those who were unable to attend, we are indebted to you for your incredible work you have done over the past many years. You can take great pride in knowing that you have touched countless lives and had a tremendous impact on our students and our community. We are grateful to you for the service and commitment you brought to Carroll County Public Schools each and every day, and you will truly be missed. Please know how much you are appreciated. Retirees, as I read your name, please come forward. Our first retiree this afternoon is Hollis De Benedictus, Special Education Teacher at Piney Ridge Elementary School, 22 years of service. Our next retiree is Joseph Dorsey, Principal, Cranberry Station Elementary School, 39 years of service. Our next retiree is Robert Foster, Physical Education Teacher, Mount Airy Middle School and West Middle School, 36 years of service.
That's a North Carol rag. I'm still singing Hubbard North Carol High School. I always will.
Our next retiree is Deborah Hartman, Grade 2 Teacher at Westminster Elementary School, 34 and a half years of service. Our next retiree is Homer Johnson, Custodian, Winfield Elementary School, 11 and a half years of service. Our next retiree is Cheryl Cult Rider, Custodian, Winters Mill High School, 31 years of service. Our next retiree is Teresa McCullough, most recently CCEA President, with 38 years of Our next retiree is Nancy Patrick, Grade 2 Teacher, Piney Ridge Elementary School, 36 years of service. Our next retiree is Anthony Roman, Social Studies Teacher, Manchester Valley High Our next retiree is Joseph Sullivan, Music Teacher at Shiloh Middle School, 30 years of service. Our next retiree is Pamela Trumpler, Registered Nurse, Mount Airy Middle School, 26 years Our next retiree is Troy Wareheim, Administrator of Athletics and School Facilities, Francis Gacki High School, 34 years of service. And last but certainly not least, a late addition to the list, but a welcome addition. Please congratulate Ms. Ann Dell, Paraprofessional at Robert Moten Elementary School, 28 years And at this time, are there any other retirees in attendance who perhaps didn't sign in? No? So with that, Board Members and those of you here, those of you at home, huge thank you to all of you. Best wishes for a happy, healthy, and rewarding retirement. Give them all a round of applause one more time.
Our SGA report.
I don't think anyone was there. Are they here? I know we did get a letter.
Yeah, I think they sent it in over letter. I think they sent it there. So we do need to...
No.
I would just skip it and we can read this.
You see, do read it?
No.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. She sent an email and a letter and evidently could not be here tonight. Public comments, citizens' participation. We've been, and tonight is a pretty small crowd. We've had some large crowds. Be checking emails. Between now and the next meeting, we're going to try to transition to an online registration for it, so it's not a matter of people coming here and having to wait in line and be civil with each other and all of that. We're going to try to hold it to 15 speakers, and the plan is that you will know prior to the meeting if you are one of the speakers or not. So look out for the emails and the system will be forthcoming. Ms. Patagia.
Thank you, Mr. Kyler. To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed to address the Board for the allotted three minutes. Only those speakers that have completed the blue card in its entirety will be chosen to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the Superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The Superintendent and the Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizen participation at approximately 5:15 PM. There is an opportunity for additional citizen participation later in the meeting as we get into the agenda. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allowed later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comment in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or the Board members. First speaker is Nikki Guinan.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent McCabe, and Commissioner Frazier. My name is Nikki Guinan, and I'm beginning my third year as President of the Carrolltown Elementary School PTA. 10 days ago, I received a phone call from our school principal alerting me that one of the two play structures for the K-5 students had been unexpectedly removed because it was deemed too old to repair and too dangerous to let stand. Worse, the remaining small playground equipment has also had broken pieces removed, and there is no immediate plan for replacement. Carrolltown houses around 600 K-5 students, about 100 per grade. One small play structure with missing pieces is insufficient for 100 kids at a time. Now, I could quote countless studies on the benefits of active play for elementary-age children, how it increases achievement in schools, and fosters relationships between kids, but you're all parents like me, and you don't need studies to know that an elementary-age kid needs to play. And we all know, if you don't provide that outlet, they're going to create one for themselves, and it's usually not what we want them to create. So I have reached out to our parent community to research and write grants for play structures. Our principal is also looking for funding. I've been told to contact local businesses and philanthropic organizations. However, Carrolltown is not eligible for most grants. As this Board has mentioned in the past, we're in a wealthy county, and we're considered too wealthy for a grant. I'm also concerned that the schools will soon wear out their welcome. With Freedom Elementary's fundraising campaign less than two years ago, and at least two more South Carroll Elementary Schools beginning the funding process, I worry that our community will become weary of donating money to something that should be provided by the district. Carrolltown is a fortunate school. We have a large, active parent community, and we are able to support many programs for our kids. During my first two years as President, our PTA has been able to cover the budget shortfall when our school's printers and classroom conjectors have broken and the education subscriptions have expired. Freedom's playground cost around $150,000, though, and now our school community is tasked with fundraising this expense, too. Classroom equipment subscriptions and play structures are necessary to the success of our kids and should be fully factored into school budgets. But these budgets do not seem to be able to cover what the schools need. What is CCPS doing to secure funding for our elementary schools' necessities, including play structures? Finally, just six weeks ago, 600 children played on that structure daily, yet it was so dangerous it was immediately removed. Deterioration at this magnitude doesn't happen overnight, so why were our children permitted to play on a structure that inspectors suddenly determined wouldn't survive the next season? I argue that parent groups should not be responsible for funding play structures, but if that's the way it's to be, then we should have been told at least two years ago that we were nearing the end of its useful life, so we could have filed all the paperwork with CCPS facilities, received bids from companies, and secured the funding, so that as one play structure was being removed, another was ready to go in its place. And instead, in a little over six weeks, daily recess at Carrolltown will mean 100 kids at a time sharing one small playground structure with several missing sections. And this just is not acceptable for our kids. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kit Hart.
Good evening. My name is Kit Hart with Moms for Liberty, and I'd like to begin by thanking each of you on the Board for all the work that you've done and continue to do for the children of Carroll County. After last month's meeting, when the Family Life Committee was forced to adopt MSD's health curriculum to include teaching gender ideology starting at the youngest of ages, countless parents have become increasingly concerned about the direction that schools are headed, and for good reason. Counties across the country have implemented radical policies that do not take into account the feelings and concerns of the vast majority of parents and students in an attempt to pacify a small but loud number of progressive activists. Here in Maryland, Anna Rundle County's policy states, quote, "Students participating in overnight field trips and camps shall have access to facilities that correspond to their gender identity." Montgomery County's identical policy continues, quote, "Some students may feel uncomfortable with a transgender student using the same facility. This discomfort is not a reason to deny access to the transgender student. School administrators should work with students to address their discomfort," end quote. In other words, it's your 13-year-old daughter's fault if she feels uncomfortable changing into her field hockey uniform in front of a boy she sits next to in math class. Additionally, it is naive and irresponsible to assume that these policies will not be taken advantage of, or cause significant and widespread unease, confusion, and ultimately harm to students. Such was the case in Loudoun County, Virginia, last year, where students have access to whichever bathroom they prefer. There, a heterosexual boy wearing a skirt in order to gain access to the girl's bathroom entered the bathroom and proceeded to throw a 14-year-old girl to the ground, forcing her to perform two sexual acts on him. His consequence, rather than being expelled or even reprimanded, was to simply transfer him to another school in the county, where he proceeded, of course, to force another adolescent girl into an empty classroom and assault her as well. These are not isolated incidents, and similar abuse will occur within the schools of Carroll County if a policy is not implemented to protect the privacy and dignity of our students. Carroll's current policy is on a case-by-case basis, which simply is not good enough. I approach you today to request that you draft and vote on a policy which requires students to use private facilities according to their biological sex. Sexual predators, regardless of their gender identity, will have more direct access to our most innocent population if this is not implemented. The citizens in this county deserve to know where each of you, as well as those running for a seat on the Board, stands on this topic. Students deserve to feel secure when using public facilities. Teachers deserve logical and direct guidelines, and parents deserve reassurance that their children are safe and protected while at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Caitlin Edmondson.
Hello and good evening. The state's new health curriculum goes into effect for high schools this fall, with the remaining grades gradually having the new health curriculum phased in. It is my understanding that you cannot opt out of the new health curriculum before third grade, so my request tonight is that there needs to be some kind of exception made for parents to opt their children out of the state's new health curriculum at any age if the state is going to choose to include radical ideologies such as gender identity theory, starting in preschool. If schools can make exceptions for children who identify as non-binary or even as cats, then I think me asking for you to not have my young children inappropriately sexualized with confusing ideas like gender fluidity is not asking much. I've said this before, feelings aren't facts, and if we don't want to raise a generation of narcissists, we cannot teach children that their feelings are facts. For example, I feel like I should only pay $1.50 for a gallon of gas, but the fact of the matter is, the last time I filled my car up, I paid $4.79 per gallon. You can feel however you want to feel, but that does not change reality. Schools need to teach facts. It is not compassionate to lie to people. It is not compassionate to pump children full of hormones, hormones that are known to cause cancer. It is not compassionate to enable children and even young adults to butcher their bodies only to later deal with severe suicidal thoughts with the onset not occurring until seven to 10 years after transition. That is not compassion. That is abuse. I would rather our children hear a hard truth over a comforting lie any day. There is no hate in our hearts, just love for all of our children, every single one of them. I ask this Board to please continue to push for the curriculum that the Family Life Committee has thoughtfully put together, but at the very least, you need to allow parents to decide for themselves and for their own children what may or may not be harmful in the long run and opt out of this nonsense. Thank you, and God bless.
Next speaker is Joe Sessa.
They said they weren't coming for the kids, they said, that they weren't trying to groom the kids. Yet now the kids are attending drag shows, slipping dollar bills to strippers, and participating in drag themselves. All this is happening whilst the number of LGBT persons has doubled again in the last generation to 21% of Gen Z, and we're supposed to think there's nothing nefarious going on. You know, these cries for help from LGBT members here might be taken more seriously if it wasn't for the utter degeneracy that we've seen these past years in our schools and amongst LGBT community. We've seen everything from pornographic reading materials and drag queens in schools to gay men profogating naked in public in front of children at pride events. The list goes on. Frankly, I don't feel pity for people who endorse such behaviors, and I certainly wouldn't accept them and want them to be made to feel included. Perhaps you should police your own before you come to us demanding anything. Yet you come to us anyway demanding that sexualized content be taught to minors, and on top of it all is the pseudoscientific theory that gender is a spectrum. We've long known that there is large overlap in the behavioral traits of men and women. This does not make a man who likes feminine things a woman and vice versa. It is theorized that those that have gender dysphoria have brains that are more like the opposite gender, that a brain of someone with gender dysphoria is different than their biological sex is proof enough that gender is physical and not something that someone chooses. Furthermore, gender dysphoria is rare. To uproot well-established biological and sociological conventions based on an outlier is anti-science. This leads me to my point that this new gender theory falsely impresses upon children that they can choose their gender. The physical and psychological ramifications of imposing these ideas on children are enormous. No one speaks of those that detransition. The adults who wrongly chose and regret the decision to transition in their youth. Not everyone who thinks themselves opposite gender has gender dysphoria. They can simply have emotional issues or other psychiatric conditions. The damage from the consumption of hormones and surgeries are irreversible, and this is why we do not let inexperienced children, especially those that have been pumped full of gender fluid nonsense, hack up their bodies. It is gross irresponsibility, and parents who support this are derelict in their duties as parents. What's more, is that being transgender has become a sick sort of fad, like astrology, where there's a whole world of pronouns and identities that someone can choose from, including being a cat. This demeans those that actually are struggling with gender dysphoria. Even sicker is the world of self-obsession, that is narcissism encouraged by these fads. Here, people become immersed in a world of constantly thinking about themselves and their own emotions, only to become emotionally unbalanced when the real world doesn't comport with their fantasy. These are not strong people who will contribute to society. Now, try to imagine a world where this is taught as fact. It is a cult of the self and of attention seekers, and the extravagant outfits and hairstyles proves this. Teaching these gender concepts to children, especially the fallacious idea that gender is fluid, is damaging to children and must be removed from the curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Margaret Barnes. And if there's any other cards.
Hello, I don't have anything prepared because I've been working, but I have very deep concern. I looked at my son's curriculum for his freshman year in high school, and it was devoid of English and history, which I have a very big problem with. I'm confused, and actually, it was something about computer tech. And I'm looking at this curriculum, and I'm not seeing any humanities. It seems very short on humanities. And I'm confused why we are being told that we have to teach diversity, inclusion, and equity, and social-emotional learning, and critical race theory, and yet we're not actually teaching history. I am a big proponent of teaching history, and that includes all history. That includes Black history. That includes Native American history, European history, African history, South American history, European history. We have to teach that because we can teach how to use a computer, but if these children don't understand the meaning of, you know, policy and they don't understand... don't understand the meaning of, you know, policy, and they don't understand the meaning of the Constitution, and they don't understand the meaning of words like "mother" or "woman", or, you know, to me, it just seems like words have lost their meaning. And so I'm really concerned about this. My second issue that I'm concerned with is these new curriculum and the digital curriculum collecting data on our children. I have a very big problem with that. This is the public-private partnership between government and corporations, and a lot of these curriculum say that there are third-party access to our children's information. This is very concerning to me, and I would appreciate it if you could look into this because I know that they say that it's all protected, but I highly doubt it is. There's a reason why education is a huge cash cow for corporations, and it's beyond education. It's data collection, data mining, and this is a very big concern of mine. Thank you. Oh, and I just want to say one more thing. I don't have a lot of time. In Loudoun County, when that young girl was raped, I think it's very important to realize that the county, the school board there didn't tell the parents, and the reason why they didn't tell the parents is because they were about to vote on the transgender policy.
I appreciate your thought.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas Reeves?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I have your citizen participation card here. The topic you list is clearly a personnel issue, which...
I believe I can address what I need to say to the board without mentioning any people or any specific personnel involved, just more along the lines of the general theme of what happened to the girl.
Well, sir, you can go ahead. I'm going to interrupt you if I believe you're addressing personnel information.
My name is Douglas Reeves. I have a daughter that's on the Westminster High School volleyball team. I don't have to say anything specific about that as far as what's happened to these girls. We've had a public town hall. We've committed, as a school system, and I am a teacher at Liberty High School, as a school system, to take care of these girls, okay? The fact that there wasn't a mental health professional involved in the hiring process of the new coach, and their voices were not heard, is absurd to me. These are young kids who have been harmed more than any athletes in the history of Carroll County sports. They're going through counseling, they have trust issues, they are dealing with the fact that they had something to say, and they had ideas as far as what they wanted to see as their new coach. Their parents had ideas what they wanted to see in their new coach. That information was given to the athletic director and other people at the school, and quite frankly, ignored, okay? I think there was a responsibility for the school system to make sure there were mental health professionals involved in this hire because of the nature of it. I'm not mentioning any specific names or anything I specifically have problems with. The problem that I have is that these girls deserve better, and when I addressed the problem with the principal of the school, I was told, in exact words, "The parents and the kids don't get to choose their coach." I don't think that's what they were looking for. I think they were looking to have a voice, and the fact that they need to trust this person coming in, and their trust was damaged to the point that they're in counseling and that they are seeking help for what they need to do to move forward. By hiring someone without any voice, there are distrust issues. There are people that are involved in the program that are great, that they've been associated with, that they brought in, that are assistant coaches, that they know these kids, and they were part of the healing process for them in some of the meetings they had right after the situation with Mr. Frog, okay? The problem is that these girls are put in a situation where now there is dread, and there are girls talking about quitting volleyball because of the hire. And I don't think that would have happened if there were a mental health professional involved, and the parents and kids got a chance to say their piece. That's all I need to say. I think the policy is in place that it's not normal to bring in someone from mental health for a hire. I think that the situation called for something different than the regular policy.
Thank you.
Employee groups.
He's like, "What?"
It's going too fast.
I'm not used to this.
This isn't my job. I forgot.
Yeah, forgot. Okay, there's hardly any retirees left, oh, but thanks for you two. Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, board members, and Commissioner. I am Celeste Jordan, President of Carroll County Education Association. I look forward to coming before you each month. I hope the educators of Carroll County are enjoying a relaxing and restorative summer after what was the most stressful year of my 27 years of teaching. I hope the 11-month educators can find some time to recharge as they continue to work with our students this summer, and I do wish the retirees well as they go off into a life that I'm very jealous of. At the beginning of July, CCA sent seven delegates to the NEA Annual Representative Assembly. I'm sure some people are curious about what happens at the NEA Rep Assembly since I've seen some of our business items published locally. The NEA Representative Assembly has representatives from all 50 states. We discuss our Constitution, bylaws, budgets, and new business items, just like you, the Board of Education, discuss policies, strategic plans, the pillars, and whatnot. Any member of the NEA can submit a change to the Constitution, bylaws, or any new business item, as long as they have 50 other members sign off on it. These items are presented to the body of the NEA, definitely not the other one, to debate and vote to support or not. Just like you, the Board of Education, debate policies, whether it's closed-door, open policy, and you vote out here. It's the same thing. I know some of the new business items are flashpoints for some people. For instance, an NEA member did submit an NBI asking the NEA work with state affiliates to support mandatory masking and vaccinations. Again, any member can submit an NBI, as long as they get 50 signatures. It was debated and quickly defeated by an 85% margin. That's how democracy, the democratic process works, okay? Other MBIs didn't seem to receive as much online attention, but I also thought you'd like to know, we discussed financial literacy curriculum, because there are some places that are not as good as ours, and they have banks that come in to do the financial literacy, which I don't think it's a good idea to let banks come in to teach children about credit and whatnot. We've discussed suicide prevention programs for both adults and students. We discussed how to reduce the special educator workload. So there were a lot of things discussed. The reason the NEA Rep Assembly meets is to do the business of NEA, a national organization. Not everything we debate at the NEA Representative Assembly applies to Maryland or Carroll County. Part of my job is to educate people about the union, as well as to advocate for our members. I've heard people say they don't like teachers' unions, but they support teachers. CCA members are teachers and educators. We are classroom teachers, special education teachers, nurses, school counselors, media specialists, academic facilitators, resource teachers, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists. In addition, we are parents, grandparents, aunts, and uncles, and cousins, just like everybody else. We are part of the Carroll County community, we are CCEA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and welcome to being the new president of CCEA. We're going to miss you, Teresa.
Any other employee groups?
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Frazier. I am Cindy Porter, the newly-elected president of CASE, representing assistants, clericals, and LPNs throughout Carroll County public schools. As president, I am extremely proud to represent these education support professionals who routinely go above and beyond in support of all of the students of Carroll County public schools. Their commitment to our students became abundantly evident as our school system navigated the past two years of the pandemic. By the nature of our jobs, our members have the opportunity to form more in-depth relationships with students and their families. Those relationships are an asset as we, as a school system, continue to address the evolving needs of our students as a result of the unprecedented historical event that has had such a significant impact on their formative years. CASE looks forward to continue being a valued part of the process as we all work together to help the students of Carroll County achieve the successes we know they are capable of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other employee groups? Board member activities and correspondence, and Ms. Vinnie says she has them.
Not much, just been doing my college work. I just want to give a friendly reminder, the Carroll County 4H Fair begins on July 29th. I know CASE and CCEA always comes out and helps out in the ice cream shop there, so I hope they come out again. The cake auction is on August 3rd, the livestock auction is on August 5th, so make sure you look on the website for the Carroll County 4H Fair for all the activities. And on Sunday, July 31st, they will be having their 125th Celebration fireworks, so everybody mark your calendars, come out. They're still looking for volunteers, too, so I hope everybody can make it to the fair in the next couple of weeks.
And it's okay, we'll just go across, and I'll be quick. On June 13th, I got together with Bus Stop Express, and we offered free ice cream for any students on their last day of school. I did not put it through, is that all?
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Yeah.
There was one previously, just went out.
He can talk now, though.
Yeah, but it's recording.
I'll do this while he's working on it. And I apologize, I didn't feel it was proper that I put it through the school system for an advertisement, so it was Facebook and word of mouth through Bus Stop, and it's something we'll try to do each year. On a personal note, on June 25th, we had a surprise party for my 50th wedding anniversary with Rhonda Kyler, and I assume now she's going to keep me. June 29th, we did, Ms. Patagia and I were invited to an MSD roundtable, and we all got to do some comments, and it was interesting, a lot of the jurisdictions had similar comments. We talked about local control, we talked about funding, we talked about how we feel, and some of you may disagree, but on our website, there are ways to communicate with us, there's ways to make sure all of us get a message. With MSDA, that's very hard to do. We've actually had individual board members on the state level say, "If you wanted me to know about that, you almost need to send it in regular mail." Well, that just doesn't seem like today's world. So I'm following that up. The president of that group's offered to meet, and we're going to try to do another meeting and talk one-on-one, but I think, and I think you'll agree, it was a lot of good conversation. I will be curious to see if it was token so they could say, "We let everybody communicate with us," or they heard some of our remarks, but I think it was pretty good. I just wanted to mention quickly, I live in the Manchester area. The week of July 4th was the Manchester Carnival. I think Rees is going on now, and our fire departments, and some places, Lions Clubs, and those people really deserve our support, and it's a great event, and it's a great way to see community members. And then July 19th was Election Day. We have some board members running for office again, and others, and that's also, it's, I don't want to talk politics, I don't want to talk election, but it is interesting because you do see a lot of people and you hear a lot of comments that you might not otherwise hear. I wanted to mention quickly, and I won't get into any detail, but there's been a lot of rumblings on Facebook and other social media about the excess amount that we spend on attorneys, no offense. I think one of the things people need to understand, a lot of the school systems, our size and larger, have attorneys on staff. We do not, so when you see the legal fees we pay the entity to have someone at every meeting and advise us, that's 100% of our legal fees. We don't have somebody on staff doing a lot of that work, so it's a little hard to say, you know, "This school system spent half of what you spent," because you're not seeing the whole picture. And I just wanted to mention that to people. Ms. Herbert.
Okay, briefly, on the 13th of June, I attended a retirement celebration luncheon at one of my former schools, William Winchester Elementary, to celebrate the years of service of one of the retiring members, Mrs. Jennifer Redifer. So it was good to spend some time in Willie. On the 19th, I attended a Juneteenth Freedom Day celebration, which was held at the Sykesville Historic Colored Schoolhouse. On July 2nd, I attended the Let Freedom Ring Parade, which was held in Sykesville. And when I say I attended, I got to ride in the parade, so I was in the parade in a 1968 Camaro, and I happened to serve as one of the judges of the floats. So again, that was a wonderful opportunity, and I certainly enjoyed being in my hometown that day. And finally, on yesterday, I worked with the co-chair of the Conference Program Committee and MAVE staff to finalize plans for our upcoming meeting of our conference. And again, plans are being finalized for MAVE's annual conference in October. I think there are going to be some wonderful keynote speakers and sessions that we're planning, so hopefully fellow board members can find some time to attend. Thanks.
And Dr. Dorsey mentioned carnivals and parades also. One of the comments I wanted to make, and I forgot, it is very uplifting to see how many of our SROs are walking around the carnival grounds, kids running up to them. I want to compliment our Commissioner, Sheriff Dewees, on what they've done to create an SR program in Carroll County that ought to be looked at nationally. And I know there's a lot of negativity once in a while in law enforcement, but it, more than once, and I went up to them afterwards, I said, "You've got to be an SR on one of the schools." "Oh, yeah, oh, yeah," you know, and the kids, they run up to them, so they're respected. It's just a great system, and I'm so glad we have it. Superintendent's report. Ms. McCabe?
Before I begin my report this evening, I would like to express my appreciation to everyone for the warm welcome I've received since being named Superintendent of Schools. It's an honor and a privilege for me to lead our school system as we move forward with our focus on academics during the new school year. I also would like to congratulate all of our retirees who were recognized here this evening, and those who couldn't be with us. Thank you for the many years you've dedicated to our students, our schools, and our school system. On another note, as many of you may know, our central office building, especially our third floor, was damaged during last week's severe storms. I would like to thank the many employees who worked tirelessly to clean up and make the necessary repairs, as well as those who were displaced from their workspaces for their patience and flexibility. And finally, I would like to share a few of the accomplishments our students and staff have had since our last board meeting. Students from the Carroll County Career and Technology Center brought home three medals from the National Skills USA competition, including a gold medal in graphic communication, a silver medal in job interview, and a bronze medal in promotional bulletin board. Congratulations to these talented students and their instructors on this tremendous accomplishment. Student leaders from our high school FFA chapters were recognized at the Maryland FFA Convention. Several students received the state FFA degree, the highest degree that the state FFA Association can bestow on a member. Students also received awards in many of the competitive events. Congratulations to all of our students who received recognition and their advisors. I encourage you to visit our website at carrollk12.org to read more about all of these accomplishments.
We have no presentations this evening on the agenda, so the next item is under Reports, the Stool Construction Report. Ms. McCabe?
Board members, this is the monthly construction report showing our progress on the two major proj-
proj, projects and some work being completed this summer. Staff is available if any of you have any questions.
Just going to say, it's looking beautiful over there. It's beautiful. I'm loving seeing all the steel and all the concrete going up. Okay.
Mr. Marks, I just did want to ask, I mean, it, as Ms. Patagia was saying, it looks like the, the projects are really, they're moving along despite some, some concerns with, with lead times and costs and things like that, but everything seems to be moving along according to schedule. Was just wondering if the storm last week, we know what it did to the central office building, do we have any significant concerns with any of the other school buildings across the county?
We were lucky, those two sites, you know, escaped all damage. You know, they obviously had a lot of water infiltration in certain areas, but it was very manageable stuff, so we were fine with both sites, yeah.
Okay, fantastic.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We'll now move into action items, and our first action item is the approval of personnel appointments. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
McKay?
Board members, tonight I'm bringing you the appoint, the following appointments. These types of appointments usually happen in the summer when we go through some of our transitions in preparation for the new school year. Tonight, we have Gary Davis transitioning from Senior Technology Leadership Advisor at AECOM to Chief Information Officer. Christina Denstedt, Special Education Teacher at Elmer Wolf Elementary, to Assistant Principal at Elmer Wolf Elementary. Arlene Moore, Principal at Hampstead Elementary, to Supervisor of Special Education Elementary. Erin Robinson, Acting Assistant Principal at Westminster High, to Assistant Principal at Westminster High. Nicholas Shockney, Director of Special Education, to Assistant Superintendent of Instruction. William Vandergrift, Consulting Teacher in Special Education, to Supervisor of Physical Education and Health Education in Curriculum and Instruction. And lastly, Shannon Zep, Assistant Principal at Francis Scott Key High, to Principal at West Middle.
Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is approval of personnel action items. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
This is our monthly personnel actions. This time, we have 98 new hires, six releases from contract, five promotions, seven increases, and two decreases. As you can see, there are quite a number of new hires, as expected, in the summer. We're working very hard to fill all of our vacancies for the upcoming school year, which has been challenging in CCPS and for all other systems across the state and nationally. This is particularly true in critical shortage areas, but staff are working hard to fill these positions.
Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item is ratification of the CCEA Master Agreement. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
These next four items are for you to approve ratification of four out of our five master agreements with our bargaining units. This includes CCEA, CASE, APSASCO, and the Food Services Association. All four units have ratified these agreements, and your approval will make them official.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
I'd like to say, and, and for all four, not, not just this one, I think they happened in a very timely manner, due, as one of the employee groups said earlier, last year was a very tough year. We all want to be back to normal, and it's not happening quickly enough, but I think, I want to compliment the bargaining units, I want to compliment our staff on getting through this and, and getting agreements and getting this quickly for us to be able to vote on it. So thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I now need a motion for the ratification of the, I'm not even going to say all the letters, Master Agreement.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Ms. McKay?
So, each of the master agreements, and what we just discussed, all you need to do is approve each of those master agreements. So, we'll go through for CASE, and you can vote on that, and then we'll do, we'll do CCEA, CASE, APSASCO, and then Food Services.
So, a motion to approve CASE?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve APSASCO?
APSASCO.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to approve, what is that one?
The Food Services Association.
Oh, the Food Services, yes, yes. And a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
And, and I assume, no discussion on any, all of them, everybody's happy, correct? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We now need a motion for the approval of transfer of school bus contracts.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
From time to time, our various bus contractors wish to transfer contracts from individual bus routes between contractors or legal entities. After review, we bring them for your approval.
And this is something that happens several times a year. Any questions or comments, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
We now need a motion for the approval of fiscal year 2023 CIP budget adjustment.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
This item relates to state funding for the East Middle Replacement Project. As you recall from prior meetings, we were one of the first school systems with a project ready to receive funding through the new state funding program under the Bill to Learn Act. The state gave us approval to proceed even though they had not ironed out all of the state procedures. The final procedure, a joint MOU between the Board, the County, and the Maryland Stadium Authority, came to you for approval a few months ago. The MOU has since been signed by the County and last month by MSA. Everything is now official, and we and the County can now recognize the state funding in the local CIPs. This doesn't change the amount of state funding, but formally recognizes it in the budget.
Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
We now need a motion for the approval of a lease agreement with ARC of Carroll County.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. McKay?
We are recommending for your approval an annual lease agreement with the ARC of Carroll County for them to provide us with space and equipment to house our Transition Connections Academy. The ARC possesses appropriate space and equipment more suitable to the students' needs than what is presently available at Carroll Springs School Site, where the program is housed in relocate, relocatable classrooms. We believe this is a beneficial arrangement for the students, and Mr. Shockney and Mr. Hardisty's teams have worked together to ensure that transportation is arranged.
And, and some of you may remember, this was on the agenda for last month, we took it off the agenda, legal did some tweaking to it, which I think was relatively insignificant, and now it's ready to be approved. Ms., Ms. Vigney?
I just have the question about the, the $24,000 fiscal impact, so that's already included in the budgeting process.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, that wouldn't be an exception to budget at all? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to say, you guys are going so fast, I think I'm getting, I think I'm getting a little lightheaded. I now need an, an approval for the revisions to Board Policy JLI, Students Exclusion, Exclusion, Physical Restraint.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
This policy is returning for your action after being brought for discussion last month and submitted for public comment. Mr. Streker shared last month that the policy revisions are necessary as a result of law that passed this year. Mr. Shockney is available if there are questions.
Ms. Vigney?
And I just wanted to say, so there were, there were only some minor changes versus the last time, and it was like adding COMAR instead of...
Correct. We added COMAR, and then we did pick up on one typo on page eight of the regulations, which is item 6A3. It should be resistant there, and we'll make sure that that gets corrected. But there are no changes other than adding the COMAR in front of the references to COMAR.
Okay, compared to what we saw last month?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect.
I would say the President's not looking at me, but anyway, did we get any feedback from parents or anything?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay, all right, I didn't think we would, because we had talked about it, and so I didn't think so. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
We now need a motion for the approval of award of bids.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Ms. McKay?
There are six items on the award of bids tonight. Last month, you acted on the award of bids as a whole, therefore I'll continue that practice unless you would wish to separate any item for discussion before action. I'll go through the list, and then we can discuss any separated or pulled apart. Number one is the boiler replacement at William Winchester Elementary School. This replacement is needed due to the age and condition. It will be funded through the local CIP infrastructure renewal account. Next is the playground addition for Friendship Valley Elementary School. As you know, when playgrounds need to be updated, or when schools want to add a playground or equipment, they raise the funds with the school community, and we handle the procurement.
Yes, I do have a question. So we did have someone regarding public comment regarding that. I was wondering if Mr. O'Neill could just go over again briefly, like, why this occurs the way it does? And it's not that we don't want to, but there's, there's reasons why we necessarily can't fund it 100%.
Correct. There's, there's not a legal reason why we couldn't consider that and, and talk about how that might happen, but our practice has been, for as long as I know, which, which isn't from the beginning of time, but for a while, that we allow our school communities to do the fundraising, to, to either add another playground, some, some would like to increase the size or the scope, or have a second one or a third one, or to replace one that's, that's been deemed in a condition that needs to be replaced. That's been our, our practice for quite a while. We're, we're not the only Board of Ed in Maryland who does that. There are some who do budget for it in some way. I've had this conversation with different parents groups over the last couple of years. That's not been our practice. If it were to become our practice, it's my opinion that it, it might set more obstacles than less for the communities, because you as a board would be confronted with, do you wish to add this as an item to your CIP, your capital improvement plan? And if so, you know, just since we're having the discussion, for what it's worth, you'll probably have a, a whole bunch of advocates show up asking that other things also be added to the CIP, such as turf fields and, and other kinds of things. And you'd have to prioritize what belongs in the CIP, but then you're all aware that you have a long list of things in your CIP that have never been fully funded, that continue to get pushed year to year. So this would become part of that process, and I'm not sure when it would ever get, just based on experience, I'm not a Board of Ed member, but I'm not sure when we would ever get to a point where a project like this was being funded, because you have this laundry list of modernizations, roofs, HVAC, window replacements, kindergarten additions that go back to 2002 that have never been completed and so forth and so on. So, but I, you know, what I've tried to share with the parents groups is, I know it's, you know, I know it's a challenge, I know it's a sticker shock, I know it's a problem, but our communities have been able to do this. I understand it's a little bit frustrating if you, and I am a parent, but I understand it's a little bit frustrating if you have a kid in a school for X number of years, and you might be looking at a project that gets completed, and you're part of the fundraising effort after your child moves on to the next level of school. There are those things that are realities, but I'm not sure there's a quicker way or a better way to fund them under our current structure than how it exists now. I think they would, it would be hard to make playgrounds a higher priority than the things that are already exist in your CIP without some level of funding from some unanticipated source that hasn't existed in the past. So that's the message I've been giving, as I've been invited to speak with different groups of parents over the last couple of years.
Appreciate that. And I know we were hearing, the, apparently the community was not notified, something that happened at Carroll Town Elementary School Playground. I, I don't know, what is, what is normally like the process on that, and how the community is, is, you know, told how, what is going on?
You know, we inspect them every year, so we have an environmental safety coordinator who goes out and conducts inspections, and if he, if he deems that something, you know, is not safe to be used, then we stop its use at that point. It doesn't always, and I want to be careful here, because I'm not, I'm not trying to launch an argument with these folks, I understand their concerns. Sometimes it can be something immediate, sometimes you can look at a, a playground set and say, okay, that's been here for 15 or 20 years. And I'm not suggesting that a school, a principal, sometimes they change, communities should, should treat it like their own capital plan and say, let's start fundraising now, because we'll know, you know, we know in 15 or 20 years, we're going to need to replace this playground. But those are the things that are sort of the dynamics at play here. School communities have been successful in finding different forms of grants or, or donations, and, and again, I'm not trying to dismiss the concern or the work involved. I, I don't disagree with many of the points that were raised earlier. It, it has been working, it doesn't mean it's, it's always a fun thing, or that there aren't challenges attached to it.
Appreciate that.
And, and I, I encourage the local PTAs and the local schools, get, get wrecking parks involved, get the Lions Clubs involved, get the businesses involved, it's, it has worked pretty well over the years. And, and, and like you guys just discussed, I'm not sure why someone was surprised that, that this playground was no longer suited. They have a, they have a life, and maybe, maybe that's the answer, is get more proactive in planning ahead, but, and I think your point's well taken, no offense to our processes, they might get it done a lot more quickly than, than it would be through the process.
I do believe that, and I have shared that. I know this is an uncomfortable topic, but I've tried to be open and honest, I think I was at the CAC once and talked about this. I firmly believe that. You have a better chance through this fundraising process than you do, and I think I said something to them that night, like, I don't run the world, but even if I could and did and put this in the CIP tomorrow, it's not likely it will ever get funded in your lifetime, or in my, you know, this, this is a challenge, but it's a process that's been affected. The other thing I, I kind of did leave out that I usually say is, if we were to somehow find funding to, to, to say, okay, we'll do sort of a, a baseline of funding for every school, it's probably going to be a very basic playground, and each community tends to want something more different, and they should, and they can, but that would also be, I think, a net result of saying, you know, even if there were magical funding that appeared and we funded it, it's going to be just this standard playground is what, is what we would put in place. So there's, you know, there's a lot of things at play here to...
And I remember you saying that, because it could, you know, like, some of these playgrounds, they're, they're able to pick the different colors, the, the different textures of things, you know, sensitivity things that attract, you know, those in autism programs, which would help them, you know, as far as identifying things, and unfortunately MSD could say, no, you're going to get this orange and yellow, and it's going to be this itty-bitty slide, and that's all you get.
Yeah. And another funding element, in the last couple of years, our legislators have, have become part of the process and received some extra grants and capital funding from the state that helped finish off some, some of the playground projects, so there's, you know, it's a challenge.
And, and Ms. Herbert said I wasn't looking around. I think Dr. Dorsey was next, and then Ms. Vigney.
I was just going to make the point, and again, it's already been made, but again, being proactive, I think, is really the way to look at it, because I know when I was at a school, the same thing happened that summer, when the inspection was done, the swing set was deemed unsafe. So then the question was, do we leave it there and let the kids use it until we get a replacement? Well, you couldn't do that. So again, it's like we had to remove it, it was a sudden type thing that had to be done, and it wasn't an overnight replacement situation. I mean, it certainly took time to get the funds together to replace the swing, but I think schools do find themselves in that type situation, where some... where something has been deemed, some part of the playground has to be removed. And then again, you're, you have to deal with, you know, how, how quickly you can get it replaced. But it has to be replaced for the safety of the students.
Ms. Savigny?
Yes, I was going to echo some of those comments. Or it's really, I think it's about planning and continuous awareness updates because the, as we all know, the communities at the elementary level, they turn over every, you know, six to eight years. And so they might not know. I know when my kids were at elementary school, we got caught off guard, right, that we needed new elementary school. And we, we were able to band together quickly and, and raise the money for the playground. But I think it's just that because there's continuous turnover of, of these parent groups as their kids age out into middle school and high school, that a lot of people are just generally caught off guard. So if we make it part of the awareness as, you know, meet CAC meetings, or maybe the, the Carroll County Council of PTAs, that this is going to be an ongoing issue. You need to plan for replacement every 15 to 18 years or something, and so here's your horizon. And know that, you know, this, these are best practices that, that we know about in order to raise that money in a quick and efficient fashion. So I think just a continuous awareness and planning process.
And, and I think, good discussion, but nothing opposed to the projects. So Ms. McCabe, can you continue on with the others?
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Yes, next in the award of bids is the chiller replacement at Hampstead Elementary School. We have had issues with the chiller at Hampstead, including the need to bring in a mobile temporary chiller for a time. This also will be funded through the local CIP infrastructure renewal account. Next is the home and hospital educational services. We need to identify a new provider for home and hospital services as our previous provider has closed. I'm recommending Edmentum as the new provider. Next is the marching band uniforms for Century High School. When we replace band uniforms at a school, we handle the procurement and share the costs with the local boosters. Finally, the sports analysis system. This is the annual contract for the service we use, H U D L, at high schools for online tools for recording and viewing the video of games.
Oh, Ms. Savigny?
Ms. McCabe, I do have just a couple of quick questions. On the, the number four for the, the home and hospital educational services, the 220,000, does that compare reasonably to, to what we were paying for these services in the past with the, with the other provider?
We're actually, it's actually a little better than we were doing. The costs have gone up in the past couple of years because we've had more students enrolled in home and hospital than we had in previous years. But the services that we're getting from Edmentum is actually a better deal, and we're getting more service from them than we were able to get from our previous supplier.
Okay, that's kind of a follow-up question that I had because I know that the way that we had handled some of the, the COVID rollover into the last school year was to kids that were more at risk, right, that we enrolled them in home and hospital services. So are we expecting that number that are enrolled this upcoming year to be significantly less than at the beginning of last year?
They should be less than they were last year, yes.
Okay, gotcha. And then just one other follow-up question on number five with the marching band uniforms. So it looks like we only got one bid. Was, do we know why there were no bids from the other two?
Mr. O'Neil?
Okay, okay. Do we think that the, the bid is a reasonable amount for the, okay, okay.
And back to the, back to the home and hospital, that is an entity that you guys have been dealing with. They're not an all-new entity just for this item.
Right. We use Edmentum for many of our virtual courses that we offer the general population of our students. So yes, it's really just an add-on to the services that they're already providing.
Board members, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are through our action items, and we've only been here an hour and 15 minutes.
It's almost eight o'clock. Oh, wait, we got a...
And into discussion, CCPS Virtual Day Instruction Plan. Ms. McCabe?
I think you missed one. We do still have one more, Mr. Kyler.
Personal transaction report.
Yeah, there was a new agenda.
Yeah.
I don't have it.
Okay.
It's on the new one.
We'll, we'll go ahead with it. For our personal transaction report tonight, this is submitted typically when we have a reassignment that does not require board approval, but which we want to inform the board about. This evening, I have five reassignments to share. The first one is Daniel Black, the Assistant Principal at North Carroll Middle to the Assistant Principal at Shiloh Middle. Michael Golden, the Assistant Principal at East Middle to the Assistant Principal at North Carroll Middle. Angela McCoslin, Director of Curriculum and Instruction to CCPS Blueprint Administrator. Chip Weaver, Assistant Principal at Shiloh Middle to Assistant Principal at East Middle. And Steve Wernick, Director of Elementary Schools to Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
And, and I apologize, let me back up. I didn't have it on the agenda, but I did have the backup. We do need a motion and a second.
I will make a motion to approve the personnel transaction report.
I'll second that.
Now, any discussion? And, and these are all good changes. Some of these will lead to next changes, right? There'd be some dominos of this. There'd be some follow-up.
Yes, there will be some follow-up at next month's meeting.
Is that a report or a transaction item? Or is it a report or discussion, or do we need?
Say again?
It's really just a transaction report, so...
I don't think we need the first and second.
Right. We don't, that's correct. We don't need to vote...
So we don't need a motion?
It's a trans...
It's just a transaction report.
Okay, yes, so we don't need a first and second.
Right.
Thank you. Making sure we're behaving.
Do we need to rescind the motion?
Yeah, yeah. We need to do it right.
Okay. So now, we're into discussion items.
There you go.
And CCPS Virtual Day Instruction Plan. Mrs. McCabe?
So we are presenting for discussion this evening a CCPS Virtual Day Instructional Plan based upon new guidelines from the state superintendent. I ask Mr. O'Neil to provide a brief overview, and then we can have discussion.
Thank you. As you remember, during the pandemic, there was a lot of discussion about whether there could be virtual days. And even before the pandemic, there was some discussion about whether there could be virtual inclement weather days. And then last year, the prior school year, the State Department of Education sent some guidance out and some opportunities very late in the year, if you remember. This year, Superintendent Choudary is well in advance of that. And so the item and the document that's part of the item that's in front of you this evening is the template from the state superintendent. It's a new process, a new template. It requires a public discussion, which is this evening. It will require your future affirmative action of a vote, and it will require both the superintendent and the president of the Board of Ed to sign the plan and the attestation form that goes with the plan. And then, and then the plan would be submitted to, to the state superintendent for his, or his designees review comments and hopefully approval. And I'll try to do it really quickly because we're doing so well this evening. But the, the plan that he's outlined is that local systems may use up to eight days for virtual instruction. And of those eight days, no more than three of the eight days can be asynchronous days. The, the others would have to be synchronous virtual learning days. Superintendent McCabe and her team have determined, and what's submitted to you for discussion this evening is that in CCPS, we would use an asynchronous day. So really one, but it would sort of float among the high schools. An asynchronous day for each of the high school graduations. And that, that would allow siblings and families and faculty and staff who want to be part of the graduations to have the opportunity to be part of the graduations. That was a sort of a struggle we had this year. So that would be our, our only planned use of an asynchronous day. And then for synchronous virtual days, we would plan to use those after we exhaust the number of approved inclement weather days in your calendar. And for next year, that would be four. So if we had four snow days, the first four would be traditional snow days where we all, well, where the students in, in 10 months' time are home, don't come in. And if we had a fifth, sixth, seventh, et cetera, inclement weather day beyond those four, then we would implement the plan and have virtual synchronous days for, for those extra inclement weather days. That's what's submitted for your discussion. We're obviously open to your discussion feedback. We can make any modifications you would like to see. This would be submitted for public feedback between now and your August meeting, and it would be at that meeting we'd ask you for your vote.
Mrs. Savigny?
I just want to say, I do really like this plan as it's laid out. I think it takes into account a lot of the concerns and feedback that we've seen from the community over, over the last year, especially the, so the graduation one was a big one that we, that we had a lot of feedback on, and I think this addresses it quite well. I also like the, the way that you're approaching the inclement weather days because it still allows kids to be kids for a couple of the days each year, but doesn't extend the school year. Like, so that would allow us to end on the day that, that we anticipate ending, right? So we're not messing, so parents would be able to potentially make travel plans and things like that that don't mess up, you know, if we happen to need to go into additional inclement weather days. So I think it's a really good compromise of, of a lot of the concerns that we've heard throughout the last couple of years. So I'm very much in favor of this. I did have one question, I think it's on page four, where we're talking about attendance procedures for asynchronous days. The, the last bullet point says, students should be given ample opportunity to make up any missed work on the asynchronous day. I was just curious if we needed to be maybe a little bit more specific about that, like, what, what exactly constitutes ample? You know, do, do we need to, so that it doesn't get abused? You know, do you have a, a couple of days window in there? Or I, I was just curious if we needed to be more specific about ample?
We, we certainly can discuss this. I think some of this language reverted from our prior virtual plan.
Okay.
And honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm the least qualified person to be standing here for, for that sort of a question. But the, the directors, Mr. Shokni, others worked on, on this with us. So we could go back and have that conversation again about some further definition there. I think that kind of the safety net that they want is to at least make sure that it's clear that, that students do have the chance to, you know, to follow up and be on record with their work.
Okay.
But defining it more specifically.
Yeah, and I think also just the way that may look for elementary, middle, and high...
Might be a little different?
Yeah. Because the assignments and projects are, are so much different depending on the level.
Okay.
Yeah, I was even thinking by teacher, you know, it may look a little different depending on what the assignment actually was.
Okay.
I, I will note that, that this section of the required plan refers only to the asynchronous days. So in our case, as proposed, this would only apply to the graduation days, so only for each high school. So we'd only be defining that for one level, at least for, you know, at least as this plan's submitted.
Okay, so the scope of that is fairly limited. It would just be for the high schools for one day.
So I'll just meet with Mr. King, and the others are on the hook, and he can work on it.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and you may have kind of covered this, but maybe for emphasis. So we, we will have this in front of us, maybe with a few small changes next month to vote on. How does the public see it other than looking at the agenda in this, and how do they comment on it?
So, well, it'll go out in the, the correspondence that Ms. Gaddis sends inviting public feedback before your August meeting. And if, you know, if there are vital things there that we can incorporate, we, we shall. Once you and, and Mrs. McCabe sign it, it will go to Mr. Choudry, and he has a team of folks who will review it and then offer any feedback. If they have a, a feedback at a level that would require revisions, we would have to bring that then back to you for final approval. I think once it's approved, the plan itself would be available on the website. Certainly, the schools would have it. And in advance of, once we clear the fourth inclement weather day, in advance of what may be the fifth or sixth, there would be some communications going out from maybe central level, but also school levels, reminding everyone to be prepared, reminding everyone to have their devices, that sort of thing. And then, of course, the high schools would send out plenty of notice prior to graduations.
Ms. Pythagorean?
I was going to say, what you had brought up about the asynchronous and making up the time, you know, like, for instance, what we just went through where, you know, basically a whole week, you had communities that had no electricity, no internet, anything. So in the event of something that would occur, the school system would know this particular pocket of area hasn't had any electricity or any internet usage. So we know that those kids will be excused a little bit longer to finish their work.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good, this is a good plan, and I'm glad MSD is doing this. Like, us as a school system already discussed it, and we were trying to come up with ideas to extend out, you know, virtual days later on. But I'm glad to see that MSD is going, hey, we got this idea, and we're like, great.
They do, yeah. And I think it's probably a bigger discussion than some other Boards of Ed where there are more professional learning days built into the calendar than we have. So there are some options there, and there might actually be some anxiety in other districts. But for us, I, I think it, it fits well with how we operate and what we do.
Any other questions or comments? Our last discussion item, Community Advisory Council.
Board members, we've had our Community Advisory Council on our meeting agendas for a few months now at the end for discussion. And so at this time, we might want to take a few minutes to discuss where we want to put that on the agenda, perhaps for next month, and what, what we might want to assign or have as the outcome for that discussion.
Ms. Savigny?
So I, I would like to suggest, I, I know that we had added the Community Advisory Council under our discussion items a while back to try to get us to think about, okay, what would be meaningful projects that, that the board needs input on, and these would be good things to, to give to the CAC, to, to go back to their communities and bring us valuable feedback. Our meetings have been very, very long recently, and through the pandemic and everything, it, it kind of ended up being sort of a secondary thought at the end of a very long meeting. But what I, what I would really like to propose is maybe at the August meeting that we have it as one of the discussion items and maybe plan to spend about, you know, 20 minutes to a half an hour on it just talking about, okay, these are the types of topics that we think are, that we're going to need input on over the next year, and we'd like the Community Advisory Council to address and give them some specific guidance. I know that there, there have been some very meaty topics in the past that CAC has given us good guidance on. There were things like the strategic plan. There were things like coordination with SIP plans at the individual schools. There was the dress code. There was the BYOD policy. There were some really good topics, but we, we kind of got a little bit away from it with everything going on with, with COVID and, and the craziness of the school year. So I think it would just be helpful to have that sort of discussion of, these are the type of topics that they've provided valuable input in the past, and then sit down and say, okay, these are the things that we think are going to be the big issues over the coming year and what we could use their help with. So I guess I would propose a, you know, 20-minute to half-hour discussion item at the next board meeting to address that specifically.
And, and I guess my question would be, they meet quarterly? They meet...
Currently, we meet quarterly, yes. But the members have proposed meeting more frequently because one of the problems has been the board may have an issue, and we don't meet again for a couple of months, so that, we don't have an opportunity to address that issue.
So we can also talk about that. Is there, is there any place we should get some input before the next meeting to help with our discussion? Or do you think, you know, is there, is there any staff? Is there any place we should go to, to get a wish list they have, or...
We might want to poll the CAC members to see what types of issues or concerns they had. We did do that at the last meeting of the school year, and I do have a list of things that they thought they may want to present to the board to study for this coming year.
Okay, great.
That would be great.
I was going to say, I believe you just sent out an email recently, like, if you're interested in being on CAC for this coming year, please to...
Yes, we're in the process of compiling our membership for the coming school year.
And that works for the general public to know it's one representative for every school.
Yes.
So if you're interested...
But we do accept members at large. They do not have a vote, but they're willing to attend. They're perfectly invited to attend.
So if anybody's interested, they need to reach out to their administrator at their school immediately and let them know they're interested in being on CAC.
Any more comments or questions?
I was just wondering if there were any staff initiatives that were out there as well that maybe some input could be provided on. I know we've, you know, we've tried to hold back a bit to sort of get everyone back into a, a regular mode of operation here. But if there's anything on the horizon that the staff is looking at, we can maybe send it in that direction as well. Because again, it's, it's great to have... Because again, it's great to have a group of citizens already in place. And again, we do want to make sure that what we're giving them is something meaningful and purposeful for all of us.
Thank you. Any more discussion? And you agree, this is a good idea and we'll discuss it next time. Great.
Everything good?
Unfinished business, new business. Ms. Sevigny?
I did have just a couple of quick things that I wanted to bring up. So, I think it was last meeting, we had talked about, you know, professional development for the teachers. I did notice on our new hire sheet, there are... There were, I think, 98 new hires. And a good proportion of those are step one or two teachers. So, they're relatively new teachers. So, there's gonna be a heavy reliance, I think, on the PD this year. And we had also talked about the board being able to kind of see a little bit more transparency around what are the PD opportunities and courses that the teachers will be taking. And so, I was just curious where we stood on that.
And I'm curious, is it mandatory or are there options for them also?
So, it's a little bit of both. For new teachers that come in, as well as for new administrators, there is training that is mandatory, staff development that is mandatory. And then, there are always self-selected trainings and workshops that employees can attend as well. Right now, we are busy preparing the professional development that will roll out during that first week back for teachers. We're also busy preparing the professional development for our new teachers when they come in that week before our regular teachers come back. So, we do plan to share with the board the types of mandatory trainings that all of our staff will receive as they come back this fall. And we'll be able to provide the highlights of some of the... Some of the main kinds of professional development content that is really hitting hard this fall.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the one other thing that I wanted to bring up was, just in terms of the strategic plan. Ms. McCabe, I know you believe highly in data and accountability and student achievement. And I feel with everything that's been going on the last two-plus years with COVID, we've really gotten away from the data. And it was more of survival mode rather than trying to achieve the strategic plan. So, I would like to propose that we schedule a work session to kind of get back, like, okay, let's right-size ourselves again in terms of our expectations of what the strategic plan looks like, what we... Setting those benchmarks and goals for the upcoming years and getting back to the data. We haven't seen real data in a very long time on the progress of our students. So, board members, if that makes sense to everyone, not too... In the not-too-distant future, maybe within the next three months or so, if we could do a work session and kind of get back to looking at the strategic plan again.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think coming back from COVID, we're all kind of resetting again and reprioritizing teaching and learning. So, I think it's a great time to look back at the strategic plan and look at what our data coming in is telling us about what we are compared to where we thought we would be at this point.
Right.
Great idea. We will put that on the calendar for sometime in the next two to three months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patagia?
I was gonna ask about some of the professional development, like, especially like some of the new policies we have in place. Is there like a slideshow that has to be presented in the schools? Like, the administrator goes, okay, this is everything and they have to go through it, like, it's a certain length?
Yes, so, some of our training for our staff is provided through Safe Schools, which is composed of all videos and slide decks. And then, there is some professional development or training that we ask each school administrator to do. If it's based on a new board policy or admin reg or guideline, then we provide the slide deck for each school principal to use with their staff. And we also go over that with the principals who will be actually presenting the material to the staff.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I had... There was... Being out and about, I heard from some staff, they were saying, you know, it was literally like a five-minute, like, just don't do it and then that was it. And so, they weren't really like given like a good, decent professional development, like, you know, policy layout of this is what you should and should not do type thing. It was just, just, don't do this and then that was it. It was like not even five seconds.
Yeah, this will be a slide deck that's prepared centrally. And I'll be sharing that with board members so that you can see that as well. So that as you go out and have conversations with folks, you'll know what they've received for professional development.
Good, thank you.
And I think some of the Safe Training link still shows up on our emails as well at times.
Yeah.
So... And again, you think you have a lot of time at the beginning of the year for PD? It's really done. Teachers are getting their rooms ready and setting up for the classes. And what, the principals maybe have a half-day or one day to get some PD in and...
They have about a day, sometimes a day and a half.
Mm-hmm, yeah, because you have your... Still, your school security and safety team information you have to go over, so...
And then, they have a day with the curriculum supervisor. So, yeah, when you really come down to it, it's not a whole lot of time for professional development.
And I think that was something... Something we heard in CAC, too. Like, some of the staff was saying that they just did not have enough professional development days, you know? I mean, we're very restrained in the calendar, you know? Everyone wants to go back a certain time and wants to get off school by a certain time by the end of the year. And so, it's very hard to have, you know, a decent, good amount of professional development for our staff. It's tough.
You know, Ms. Patagia, that's an interesting comment. I wonder if there's a way to combine that with the asynchronous plan that we're talking about and inclement weather days, where does it make sense to... If we need more professional learning days within the course of the year, is there a way to do that where there may not be... It's not the kids are just off, right? Like, but we could do an asynchronous day so that it counts and doesn't extend the school year later in the year? Is that maybe something that we might want to think about?
Yes, and the reason we didn't bring it up for this year is, you know, that we kind of... We haven't planned for that yet for next school year. But as we look at the school years, in the out-years, yes, I think we do need to... It would be beneficial for the school system to look at our use of asynchronous virtual days and whether or not it may be valuable to squeeze some extra professional development in.
Good. Where's Marshall?
Ms. Harvey?
I... Getting back to that, we need to get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic. And let's just... We can do a pilot maybe next year. But I am so concerned about... We have got to get back to the basics and the fluff's gotta go and we need to get on point and we need to be very concerned about our scores. And we can do a pilot maybe next year. But I'm just... I just know, looking as a teacher, for all those years I had taught and know other teachers, they just want to get back to the basics and not... Don't... And again, try not to add so much stuff. We just want to get back to normalcy and try not to add so much until everything comes down. But we need to get back to those basics. That's, you know, just take our time with the other stuff. It's just way too much. I do understand about professional development, about teachers. But I tell you, that first week when you're a new teacher, by Friday, you're like, what did I do or am I coming back on Monday? And I was... When I was at North Carroll one day, I'll never forget this guy. He had a black navy rouge shirt on. He went upstairs. He said, I can't stand this, and the man left. So, it is a lot of pressure that first week on new teachers. Then, when they go meet with their principal, then they meet with their supervisor and they've done this and this and they've got this meeting and that meeting and you've got to... You have faculty meetings. And their heads are spinning. And I've been through that and we're just trying to get back to normalcy. So, let's slow down a little bit and get back to reading, writing, and arithmetic. And we do need to do that stuff, but let's just take one baby step at a time. I might be wrong, but I don't think so.
I don't think we're talking about new initiatives, though.
No, 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 I'm just talking about all this other stuff. Just, let's just get back to it.
Commissioner Fraser?
I have to say, I was a teacher for 40 years. I never heard anyone say, I want more professional development. They want more time to get ready. They want more time with the students to teach. But I never heard anyone say, you know, we could use an extra day. I never have heard that in the 40 years I was a teacher.
No, there was one... It was actually one of the discussions in CAC was when they were talking about some of the mental health things that we were going through. And we were hearing, some of the teachers were saying, you know, we need professional development days regarding mental health and identification because there isn't enough professional development when it comes to some of these things. So that, yeah, there was quite a few. It was an interesting conversation, you know? But I know a teacher's, you know, in the beginning of the school year, yes, they're pulling their hair out already and they haven't even started and the kids haven't walked into the doors. So, you know, we don't want to overwhelm them. I... Yes, I totally agree. But I think like throughout the year, there's ways that we can look into doing some more for them to, you know, just more guidance and help, I think. Yeah.
Am I back on this?
No, I'm not.
No.
Sorry. The light came on. I think that was the...
Tell them what that's telling you, Ken.
I think that was most... Yeah, yeah, my light came on. And speaking of that, I apologize. I wasn't as focused as I should have been tonight. I try to be, but... And this is... This almost sounds backhanded now. But I do want to thank our new superintendent. Great plan, great meeting, great start. No pressure. And... But thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, board members. 5:00 PM on Wednesday, August 17th, there'll be a board meeting with citizen participation in the boardroom, 125 North Court Street in Westminster. 3:00 PM on Wednesday, August 31st, there'll be a workshop or work session on school security in the boardroom. And we may piggyback that with another work... Is that set?
So, on August 31st, our original plan was to have the work session on school security. At this point, we are also planning a work session that would start directly after that work session. And that way, we can have two work sessions in one evening. We will also start the evening with a very short board meeting.
And the subject of that second meeting is the Southern Area Redistricting Committee?
Yes, that's right. Just to give the board a chance to discuss the options that have come forward at this point.
And all that will be advertised and put out on the website?
Yes.
Any other discussion, comments, a motion to adjourn?
So, may it.
Who'd have thought? Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.